Good evening. It's seven o'clock. My name is Richard Burke. I'm president of the Tuolton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners, and I declare this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. The commissioners present today are Dick Schmidt, Bernice Bagnall, myself, Richard Burke, Jim Duggan, I'm Jim Doan. And I'd like to ask everyone to use your microphones when speaking. And if anyone wants to testify during the meeting today, I would ask that you do the same. Hit the button, make sure the blue light is on so that we can all hear you. And also, before you begin to testify, please state your name and your address. And so with that, we'll go to the first item of business tonight, which is a public hearing. And this public hearing is to consider draft resolution number 29-17, Establishing Water Rates and Other Service Charges for the Tuolton Valley Water District with an effective date of November 1, 2017. No action will be taken on this item at this meeting. This is simply a hearing. So we'll begin with a staff presentation, and then we will open it up to testimony. And again, if you do want to testify, I don't have my glasses on, so I don't know if I recognize folks' faces there, but if you would like to testify, please fill out a blue sheet and give it to Deborah. She is sitting right there. And we'll make sure that you're able to testify in the order in which we receive the blue sheets. So with that, I will turn the microphone over to staff.
Very good. Good evening, Commissioner Burke, President Burke, and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. As you know, I'm Mark Knutson. I'm the CEO of the district. And with me this evening is David Kraska, who is the Water Supply Program Director, and Paul Matthews, our Chief Financial Officer. And what we wanted to do this evening was provide information that you've actually heard several times over the last few months. But we thought it was important for, as part of this public hearing, to provide additional background in terms of the rate proposal. And so what we will be doing this evening is I will provide some background in terms of the district priorities. Dave Kraska will provide an overview of the Willamette Water Supply Program. And Paul will delve into the details associated with the proposed rates. And then we will be available to answer any questions you have, at which point, once you've exhausted us with your questions, I assume you'll move forward with the public testimony phase of the public hearing. So with that, we'll dive right in. I always like to start with this particular slide, which I affectionately refer to as the circle of life of the water utility. It really starts up here in the 12:00 position where we prepare our budget. That is work that actually started late last year to develop a budget proposal. And as you know, for the first four months of this year, we worked through with the board, as well as our citizens. Budget committee went through four different public meetings that involved the development of this proposed budget. Once we had the proposed budget, which was adopted by the board now a couple of months ago, then Paul Matthews and the finance team continued to turn the crank and evaluate the district's 30-year rate model or financial model that identified the resource requirements needed to be able to develop rate strategies that would fund that budget. So that got us through then updating the financial plan. Based on that financial plan and the long-term financial requirements of the district, now the finance team has developed the rate design. And Paul will talk about that here in a few minutes. One of the unique features with the rate design this particular year was we're acting on the recommendations of the Rate Advisory Committee that met over the winter. These were 13 different members of the community, a very diverse group of citizens, who came together, went through a series of half-dozen meetings where they shared a lot of perspectives, thoughts, ideas in terms of rates and future rate planning. And so what we're bringing before you this evening are concepts that really reflect recommendations of the Rate Advisory Committee, including the fact that this is actually a two-year rate proposal. And Paul will explain that further here in a few minutes. And then, once we have approved rates, we go about the business of the district. And this is, of course, the activity that we really think of as the water district providing. This is the quality water and customer service activities that we provide on a day-to-day basis, which is all funded by the process that leads up to that point. In terms of developing the both budget and ultimately the rates that fund that budget, as we developed the budget this last year, I was very clear with our staff, and you were very clear with me, that the objectives were to hold the line on the operating budget. Our goal was to essentially live within our means in terms of the operation of the district. What that meant is that we would maintain the current service level with no new significant programs. We did find it necessary to add one position in terms of one FTE associated with our customer information system. We also, as part of the budget, had proposed, and you approved, the addition of one limited term, essentially a two-year term position working in our information technology group. We have since then actually found a way to live without this additional position. And so the risk of this becoming a permanent fixture is very low now, Commissioner Bagnall. And we are using contract resources to fill in this particular hole that we do have on the short-term basis. One of the big challenges with the whole "hold the line" strategy was that our costs went up significantly. We had to accommodate a $3.8 million increase in our purchased water cost from the city of Portland, as well as increased costs from the wholesale purchase that we make with Joint Water Commission. So we had higher costs at a time that we were really trying to hold the line. Based on your direction, we've also committed to a few strategic investments, not the least of which is the in-district capital program. And I will talk more about that in just a couple of minutes. We also are making an investment in the Joint Water Commission to expand that capacity as part of our long-term supply plan. So we're making those investments. And then we have a few strategic initiatives that we have put forward to be able to essentially improve the operations and efficiency and effectiveness of the organization. And last but not least, clearly you've given us direction, and we have taken it and heated it in terms of continuing to provide funding for the Willamette Water Supply Program. It is a significant capital investment. And for that reason, we felt it appropriate that Dave would be here to explain exactly where that money is going. In terms of where the money goes, I think it's important that folks understand what your water rates actually provide. And so we've listed a series of bullets here. I won't read them all. But certainly want to start with first and foremost being to deliver 16 billions of safe drinking water over the next two years. And essentially, that's supported by rates. We have a lot of maintenance activities that are listed here in terms of coordination of flushing and hydrant maintenance. We're also making ongoing investments in the program in terms of replacing pipes where that's necessary. We try to tie those replacements to road projects so that we only tear up the road once rather than a new road, and then we wind up coming in later in the future and replacing the pipe. So again, a lot of coordination with our local partners in terms of planning of those road projects. You specifically directed us to expand the water quality monitoring program for lead and copper. That's included in this proposed rate increase. And all of the ongoing activities in terms of meter reading, billing, emergency response, all of the activities that are listed here are things that we will continue to do on a daily basis going forward. One of the major initiatives that is included in this proposal is to replace our customer information system. Currently, the existing customer information system is about 10 years old. We know that it's going to take at least two and more likely three years to replace that system. And so by the time this effort is complete, that system, the existing billing system, will be 13 years old. We know over time, our customers' expectations, requirements for the billing system have changed dramatically. And we think it's essential that we continue to be responsive to our customers' expectations for an effective, efficient, reliable utility billing system. And so it is time to essentially replace that system. A big part of our business is obviously supplying water. We do that through an approach of what I characterize as a portfolio of water resources. That includes surface water, such as the supplies we get from the Joint Water Commission and the city of Portland. It includes impoundments, again, with the city of Portland, as well as the Joint Water Commission. We use groundwater typically both from the city of Portland and their Columbia South Shore Well Field Backup Groundwater System. TVWD also has a couple of wells with an aquifer storage and recovery system where we take water during the winter when it's abundant, store it in the ground, and then pump it out during the summer when the demands are higher. That effectively allows us to help reduce our peaking on our other sources of supply. I mentioned previously, we purchase a lot of the water that we use in our contract with the city of Portland. And last but not least, one of our key resources is water conservation. We have a leading, award-winning conservation program that's made a huge difference in terms of individual per capita demands on our system over the years. We think it's essential that part of this program continues to reinforce the importance and role of conservation as a supply resource in our overall portfolio of water resources that serve the district. A big part of our planning involves trying to anticipate when we need new supplies. And so in 2014, we, in fact, Pete Boone of our staff, led a project to update our water demand forecast. And so what you see here, the upper red line, is a projection over time for the next 50 years of what our peak day water demand will be. And again, it's a forecast. And I always like to refer to the fact, we're sure that it's right. We're just not sure when it will be right. But the fact of the matter is that it's a projection in terms of what those future demands will look like. We overlay that with the existing capacity that we have in terms of Joint Water Commission, as well as the city of Portland and our aquifer storage and recovery. And we find that essentially somewhere around 2026, we begin to run out of water, that we have a challenge in terms of meeting our peak day demand. There's a couple of important features. And one, to provide any additional capacity obviously requires a fair amount of time to bring those kind of new sources online. And secondly, it's important to understand that this projection in terms of peak day demand takes into account conservation and continued investments in conservation resources. And so again, to think that we can conserve our way out of this problem simply isn't going to be effective. In addition to making sure that we provide reliability through supply, we also have to address reliability associated with other potential challenges that face our community, not the least of which is the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. We know that that risk is out there. We know that we're not that far away from physically the location of the Cascadia Subduction Zone fault. And so a big part of our work, and Dave will talk about this, is providing reliability through our new source of supply to make sure that it's seismically resilient. In addition, drought, by having multiple sources of supply, we're able to have independent sources that hopefully aren't directly affected collectively by all of a drought that may hit the region. And last but not least, it's climate change. We're not quite sure what changes might occur in terms of the changes in precipitation pattern, our quantities of precipitation, are hotter, drier, longer summers. But it seems inevitable that over the long haul, there will be changes associated with climate change. And it's necessary to try to anticipate and prepare for those. A big part of our program is investing in capital facilities. So we've listed some of the investments that come up. I mentioned earlier the Joint Water Commission Treatment Plant Expansion. One of the big projects in terms of in-district investments is the Grabhorn Reservoir. This is a 5-million-gallon reservoir that serves a big part of the service area that we're located in right now. It was constructed in the early 1970s. There was no consideration associated with seismic hardening of that facility. In addition, several years ago now, what, four years ago, we identified that there were major structural defects associated with that existing facility. And so what you see in this particular picture in the upper right is the roof is actually now supported internally with the structure by a set of scaffolding that holds the roof in place until we can get into a position where we're replacing that. That project is now underway. It's essentially 30% complete on design and scheduled to be complete in construction by 2019. We have some other pump stations and pipelines that need to be replaced in terms of providing that reliability and resiliency for our system. And last but not least, ongoing investments in things like our fleet and facilities. Those are probably relatively small items compared to our capital assets for water supply and water distribution. But I think it's important to be aware that we have to maintain the entire organization. So with that, I will turn it over to Dave, and he will talk about the Willamette Water Supply Program.
Thank you, Mark. So before I get to talking about the program, it's always helpful to remember how do we get here? And prior to selecting the Mid-Willamette Supply, the district about four or five years ago conducted a study of what options were available. And they included increased storage at Hag Lake, so that would be part of the Joint Water Commission's supply, groundwater wells that would be north of this area and a new groundwater supply pumped over the hills to our service area, the Mid-Willamette River down in Wilsonville, and then additional purchase from Portland. So all of these options were evaluated in a thorough study. And the Mid-Willamette Supply was selected for a variety of reasons. The criteria that were used were cost, environmental impact, reliability, water quality, and also the ability of the program to provide regional benefits. So in terms of looking at all of those criteria, the Mid-Willamette provided the best opportunity for TVWD going forward. At the initiation of the program, a mission statement was created that really guides everything that we do in the program. I'll just read it out loud. It's worthwhile. "To provide a cost-effective, reliable, and resilient water supply system by July 2026 that benefits current and future generations of the communities we serve and supports a vibrant local economy." There's a lot of key elements of that, very well-crafted mission statements. One of the key ones is "by July of 2026." That sets a real hard deadline for us that we will meet in completing the program. So what is the program? As I've presented many times, it's a large program starting from a water intake down in the Willamette River and the pipeline continuing north all the way up to the Sunset Highway, with an element extending east into the Beaverton area, or service area, TVWD's service area in the city of Beaverton. Now, some of the larger elements of the program include the water treatment plant. This is an image of the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant in Wilsonville. We won't be expanding the treatment plant in that area, but a lot of the same components or same elements of that treatment plant will be part of our treatment plant. Most important is the treatment plant uses a multi-barrier concept. Where all the constituents that are in the river water that we don't want in our drinking water, we have multiple barriers in the treatment plant that prevent that from passing through and into the potable water that we're producing. More than 30 miles of pipeline will connect the communities to the Mid-Willamette River Supply. And as Mark mentioned, there's a lot of detailed design that goes into the pipeline to make sure that it's resilient and specifically designed to withstand the Cascadia Subduction Zone event. This portion of the pipeline is part of the Kinsman Road Project that is just completing construction now. And it's a really good example of an opportunity project. Where along where we had our pipeline alignment, the city of Wilsonville and ODOT were planning on constructing a roadway expansion. So we were able to get there, get our pipeline installed ahead of time so that we're not upsetting a brand-new road that was just constructed. And we're endeavoring to do that as many times as we can along the way in the program. Water storage tanks will be a key component of the project. Essentially, what will happen is water will be pumped to the treatment plant, then from the treatment plant pumped to the top of the hill so that it can then flow by gravity to the entire service area. And this provides a high level of reliability in case of power failures that will have a large amount of storage at the top of the hydraulic grid lane to provide emergency supply and pressure to the entire service area. Now, it's a vast program that won't be constructed all as one big project. And so we had to break it up into what we call bite-sized pieces. And also scheduling the work to manage cash flow, account for the partnership opportunities that I spoke of, managing local disruption, accommodating permitting, and achieving overall on-time completion. One element that I'll also mention that isn't on this graphic is we tried to find reasonable and intelligent ways to break up the program. So the projects were of the right size for not only largest local contractors to bid, but encourage some national contractors as well to bid our work. We're trying to generate as much competition as possible for our program, again, to find ways to control costs. And then, it's a very large program. It's going to take a very long time to complete. It's got to be done by 2026. And so with all that time, we have to keep track of where we're spending the money, all the documents that we're producing, all the decisions that were made. And so we have a controls team that's keeping us on track in terms of staying within budget and completing on time in 2026. And this graphic here shows our spend planning and tracking. And so this is something that we're constantly tracking. This particular graphic shows by fiscal year the spend. So fiscal year 2018 is what we're just heading into right now. And as you can see, it increases dramatically over time. The ultimate spend for the program is right around $1.2 billion. And this is constantly updated and constantly tracked to make sure that we stay on track, not only with our overall spend and our cumulative spend, but also that we're communicating that to both the finance department at TVWD and the city of Hillsboro, who's a 40% partner in the program. The program accomplishments to date, quite a few on the design side. We've finished all of the preliminary designs and layouts of major facilities. We've completed six pipeline design projects. And we've submitted our permit application for the entire program. On the construction side, we've pre-qualified contractors that are able to bid our work because we want to hire contractors that have largely done this kind of work before. Three pipelines are in construction, and two of them are nearly complete. I think the next click I'm going to make is a video. And it goes really quick, so I just want to give a little preamble to it. This video, here we go. The video is a trenchless construction at Cornelius Pass Crossing TV Highway. Now, that's a tunnel and bore, or, I'm sorry, bore and jack. So the bore was the first part. And here you see the jacking going on where the pipeline is being basically shoved underneath TV Highway. And the nice thing about this is that we were able to accomplish this without any disruption at all to traffic or any of the local conditions there and get it done safely and without any change orders or any surprises at all. It was a very well-accomplished work. Couple other things I'll highlight about it. It just went by too quickly for me to do it while the video was going on. All of the contracting so far has been with local contractors. The casing pipe, the tools, the equipment, everything that we have is also from local contractors. So all of the spend to date, about 94% of it is with local contractors, local manufacturers. That casing pipe that you saw going underneath the roadway, that's from Northwest Pipe, which is in North Portland. And they've manufactured all the pipeline that we have on the program so far. So far, it's a really good story. We hope to keep as much of the spend as local as possible. This is what we're going to be doing for the next two years. It's quite a long list, but there's a lot that we need to get done. All told, on this image here is about 12 design projects. I think there's around eight construction projects. So we'll be very busy just getting the infrastructure of the program done. But as well, we're also going to be doing the planning and tracking and controls, the kind of the larger parts of running the program. And so with that, I'll pass it to Paul to talk about the financial plan.
Thank you, Dave. As Mark mentioned just a few minutes ago, the financial planning process, the rate process, starts really with the preparation of the budget. And the budget itself is a two-year spending plan. But that doesn't provide all the information we need over the life of the program. So we have a 30-year, long-term financial plan where we look at the district's capital improvement needs and its operating expenses over that 30-year period and take that into account when we set the rates and design the rates. So tonight, I'm going to talk both about the financial plan and the design of the rates. But before I get to the financial plan, I want to talk a little bit about where the district has been, how we finished the last fiscal year. The good news is the district is in strong financial position. We have available cash, strong cash position, strong revenues the last year and even this year with strong water sales have provided strong revenues. System development charges are also strong. And these are the growth-related charges that new customers pay when they connect to the system to offset the cost of growth. And the revenue there has been healthy. And the last item I want to mention is that TVWD is debt-free. What this allows us to do is to issue debt at the most favorable terms going forward. So we start the buy-in really in a strong financial position. Presented here are the capital expenditures that we have planned through 2027. As you can see, quite a bit of it is from the Willamette Water Supply Program. And that's why we had Dave talk about that here tonight. And it varies quite a bit from year to year. Presented graphically, this is the same information. The blue area that you see there, the light blue area at the top, is the capital expenditures on the Willamette Water Supply Program. The small red area here that you see is investment in our Joint Water Commission partnership that we are part of. And the rest is our in-district CIP, the gray area. The district's financial plan relies significantly on using long-term debt to fund part of the program. What's presented here is the estimate that we have on our future debt service requirements. Now, debt service is the term we use to include both the principal and the interest repayment on the long-term debt. So the strategy that we have now in place will result in the district having annual debt service payments of about $35 million by 2027. The district, as I mentioned, has strong cash balances. Presented here are our reserves that we have. The blue area are the working capital reserves that we have available for capital projects. The hashed area is what we call a debt service reserve. So as the district issues debt, it'll be required to maintain some reserves available for future bondholders. The lines I just presented here are the minimum fund balances that we want to maintain. The point of this graph is that by 2027, as you can see, the district starts to regain some of its cash reserves. The important point here is that after the program's concluded, the district will have sufficient financial resources to continue to serve its customers. Few key findings that we have here. First of all, as we've mentioned, the WWSP really does dominate the district's capital expenditures over the next 10 years. Our annual debt service could be about $35 million by 2027. There are benefits of pushing capital projects out past 2027 when the cash flows recover. And the forecast is subject to quite a bit of risks and opportunities. Of course, we want to include that in our analysis. Presented here are some of the risks that we have. We have both risks and opportunity. I'll talk about some of the risks first. I'm not going to mention all these. I just want to highlight a few. First is a potential higher cost of purchased water from the city of Portland. Just this month, Portland announced its decision to implement full filtration for the water that we buy from them. This could be anywhere from a $300 to $550 million investment that Portland will make in its water system. As a wholesale customer, we will be paying for part of that in the rates that we have for purchased water. The other risk that we're monitoring very closely is the potential loss of tax-exempt, the ability to issue tax-exempt bonds. Right now, the district can issue bonds on a tax-exempt basis. Some people have forecasted, experts have forecasted, that losing that tax-exempt status could increase interest rates for the district by about 2%. On the positive side, Dave's team has been challenged to do value engineering. They look at every opportunity to get more out of the program by making creative solutions. Just later tonight, Dave's going to be talking about in his department report, an increase in the capacity, potential capacity we have in the intake from 120 million gallons to 150 million gallons, which will save the whole region quite a bit of money. That was based on their value engineering. Mark mentioned the Rate Advisory Committee. You might remember that last summer, you actually appointed a Rate Advisory Committee. And they looked at a lot of issues, most of them around affordability. But one of the recommendations they came back to us was to revise the rate-setting process so the district would adopt two years of rate increases consistent with its biennial budget. That would give our customers more certainty and make it easier for them to participate in the rate-setting process. They also suggest that we expand the customer outreach to explain They also suggest that we expand the customer outreach to explain the new rate-setting process, and we've done that. Later in the presentation, I'll talk about that in more depth. But I want to get to the actual rates that the district is proposing tonight, that staff's proposing tonight. First of all, the district actually has two components to rates. We have a fixed charge that we charge based on the size of the meter, and then we have a volume charge that we base on the amount of water consumed at the customer's premise. Within our volume charges, there are two blocks. There's a Block 1 rate, which is a charge for all water that, for single-family residential customers, is less than 14 CCF per month, or 28 CCF if you're billed bimonthly. And for other customers, it's based on 140% of their 12-month average, moving average of their water consumption. The reason the district has this rate structure is to reflect the cost of service. Customers who have higher peaks exceed that threshold, put more cost on the district to maintain the facilities that Mark talked about in the graph a little bit earlier. So all this is designed to ensure that the bills customers pay are reflective of the cost of serving them. You can see here the Block 1 rates and the Block 2 rates that we are proposing, first to be effective November 1st, 2017, and then the rates that would be effective November 1st, 2018. As I mentioned, fixed monthly charges were also being proposed for both November 1st, 2017, and November 1st, 2018. And again, these are based on the size of the meter to reflect the cost of serving customers with different size meters. We looked at the impact on customer bills, and presented here is the impact on a typical customer that consumes seven CCF of water per month. We present the information on a monthly basis to be consistent with how customers receive their other bills. This is the same information, but it's presented in tabular form so that you can see the specific details. For the November 17 increase, it's about $5.51 per month, and again, for 2018, $6.22. We also looked at an above-average customer, and this would be a customer that would consume 12 CCF per month. That's about 9,000 gallons on a monthly basis. And you can see the details here as well. The district also compares itself to other communities for the typical bill. What's presented here is a list of local communities and where the district is in a ranking of typical bills. Here's the district currently, and here's where the district will be after the proposed rates. It's interesting, as you look at this chart, when Wilsonville first started with the Willamette Water Treatment Plant, they were at the top of the list, and since then, they have gradually come down the list as other utilities have gone to the top. Tiger and Lake Oswego both have just completed a major investment in the Clockman's River Water System, and they've gone to the top. Over time, this list will continue to churn, the district will be reaching towards the top. In addition to water rates, the district also charges other fees and charges for services that we provide to customers. It's important to update this on an annual basis so that we don't end up having a rate payer subsidizing these services. What you see here is, based on the cost of providing services, we're suggesting an increase of $5 per month for turn-on, turn-off. The other ones that you can see there, $15 a month increase for snowbirds. Again, these are based on the cost of service with the goal being that customers pay for their share, and there is no cross-subsidization. There wasn't enough room on one slide to show everything, so we broke it up into two slides to make it legible, and here are some other charges that we're proposing changes. One new item that we have is a refundable deposit for hydrant permits. These are hydrant meters, rather. These are meters that the district provides, usually in a construction situation, so people can connect to a fire hydrant. The refundable deposit will be refunded after any damages are taken care of. Lastly, would be the meters and services. They're based on the size of the meter, they're listed in Exhibit B of the proposed resolution, they're increasing from about 4 to 5 and 1/4%. So I want to talk a little bit about the expanded process that we've put in place based on the recommendation of the RAC. We've had two open houses so far. First one was on a Wednesday evening on August 2nd from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Another open house was on Saturday, actually, Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:00. We presented basically the same information at the open house that we've presented here tonight. It was an informal gathering where we had staff available to answer questions before the presentation, after the presentation, with the hope that the customers could then provide comments to the board for its consideration. We're conducting this public hearing tonight. We will have another open house to answer any questions that might come from tonight's presentation, or for people who weren't able to make the other two open houses, on Tuesday, August 22nd, here at the district's headquarters, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Public comment at your July meeting, you directed us to open the public comment period for this public hearing and hold it open through Friday, August 25th at 4:30 p.m. So we will be collecting public comments, and we will be putting them in the public record for your consideration at your September meeting. The public can make comments either tonight orally, they can provide written comments to the district at one of the open houses, they can email the district at board@tvwd.org, or they can write a letter to the district and provide written comments in that manner. Those comments that we receive by 4:30 p.m. on Friday, the 25th, will be included in the public record and made available to the board for its deliberations. Lastly, we will have another, at your regular meeting in September, the action that you will be taking will be on the proposed resolution to adjust water rates. So that concludes our formal presentation, we're available for any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from board members? We've seen this presentation a number of times, so we've had our questions answered, and staff's done a very excellent job of putting together a very clear presentation and making this information to rate payers at the various functions, meetings, open houses, and other activities that have been a part of this process. So thank you very much. Okay, I don't have any blue sheets indicating to me that no one wants to testify, and so if there's no testimony, I will then close the rate hearing. So the rate hearing is now closed. Are there any further comments from staff? Nope. Okay. Anything else that commissioners would like to comment on? Okay, very good. Okay, as a reminder, the public comment period on rates is open until 4:30 p.m. on August 25th. The board will consider taking action on the draft-proposed resolution at the September 20th board meeting. So with that, we'll go back to the normal meeting of the Tolton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners. Okay, next item is reports by the chief executive officer and management staff.
Just to run it, did you want to adjust the agenda at all?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. There is an item, and I will entertain a motion to change the orders of the day to remove Item 3A from the business agenda.
So move.
Okay, second?
And I second.
Okay, that objection? Okay, the item is removed from the agenda. So now we will go to reports by the chief executive officer and management staff.
So as we always do, we wanted to kick off this portion of the meeting with a safety moment, so Dave Kraska, our Water Supply Program Director, is here to provide the safety moment this evening.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, President Burke and Commissioners. Safety is very important to TVWD, and so the safety moment tonight is about call before you dig. So you probably can't hear this off the little computer speaker here, but you'd hear a hissing sound if you knew what was going on there. So this is a hole in somebody's front yard, and what was struck there was a half-inch natural gas line. And it was just an 18-inch-deep hole, or the gas line was only 18-inch-deep, and it's very thin plastic material, so it's very easy to damage. And so it could cause a lot of problems, but the problem that it did cause was this, a lot of utility vehicles from Northwest Natural showing up to the house, but that provided rapid response and safe repairs, and also a $900 bill to the homeowner to get that fixed because call before you dig was not done prior to that little front yard project. So the facts of this are that more than 20 million miles of utilities are buried across the United States, and that's about a football field per every man, woman, and child in the country. 45% of homeowners won't actually call before they dig, and frankly, I think that number's a bit low. I'd say it's probably a lot higher than that, but those are the facts that 811 has. Every six minutes, an underground utility is damaged, and if you actually do this call, your risk of damaging reduces to 1%. So there's a lot of good reasons to call, you can have a better day, you can avoid injury to yourself and others, and property damage, and the cost of utility repairs, and the embarrassment of outages for your house and your neighbors if it gets to that extent. And it's really simple to do. The steps are to call 811 before any digging job, planting a tree, fence posts, building a deck, installing a mailbox. Do that two to 10 days before your project, or go online, there's a website right there, www.callbeforyoudig.org, and the phone number is right there as well. Wait for the marks. The marks are just spray-painted marks in and around your house that show where the utilities are, and dig carefully around them. With brute intrusions, the utilities might slide around a little bit, so just stay away from them, and you should be good to go. And with that concludes the safety moment, call before you dig. Thanks.
Very good, thank you, Dave. I'm in the process of updating my home irrigation sprinkler system, and I made a point of doing this, and I actually found a utility that I was not aware of, so it really does make a huge difference. It's an important safety feature. A couple of items...
What color was the paint?
I'm sorry?
What color was the paint?
This was actually a century-leak line that we did not know ran across the front of our house.
Ah.
Yeah. Yeah, orange, sorry. Yeah, I should know that. Couple of items to update you on. First of all, Portland treatment. As Paul mentioned earlier, on Thursday, August 3rd, the Portland City Council voted to pursue filtration as the preferred treatment option for the Bull Run Supply to be able to remove cryptosporidium. It came as something of a surprise to a lot of staff, but it was consistent with the testimony that I had personally provided on behalf of the district, as well as from other regional water providers. During their consideration of this issue, Portland Commissioners acknowledged that filtration would result in not only compliance with the Long-Term 2 Surface Water Treatment Rule, which requires treatment for cryptosporidium removal, but it would also improve the reliability of the Bull Run Supply, improve the resiliency of the Portland Supply System overall, result in improved water quality to the water provided to its customers, and perhaps as much as anything else, would future-proof the Bull Run Supply to provide flexibility and resist unknown changes or effects associated with future regulations and climate change. The water bureau is still developing an implementation strategy, schedule, and budget associated with the new filtration facility, so we really don't have additional information about when the plant will be complete or how it might directly affect TVWD's rates, but we're going to obviously continue to monitor that situation, and we'll continue to keep the board updated as more information becomes available. Given that we are now in the middle of August, I thought I would take a minute and provide a brief update in terms of our summer water supply status. Obviously, the weather the last few weeks has been hot and dry. Based on information that was published by the Oregon Water Resources Department, about half the state is now considered in what they call abnormally dry. This is the second level of a six-step kind of warning system that exists to identify the scale or severity of drought conditions. The good news is that the other half of the state that isn't in that second stage is actually currently has the lowest level of rating with no drought conditions at all. And the even better news is that that half of the state with no drought conditions includes all of Washington County. TVWD's supply sources remain in great shape, with both the Portland and Joint Water Commission supplies at normal or actually above-normal conditions for this time of year. While the district has ample water to make it through the summer, we never have enough water to waste, and customers are encouraged to continue to use water wisely. For tips on water conservation, we encourage customers to visit Regional Water Providers' Consortium website, which is cleverly named conserveh2o.org, or you can go to the TVWD website for related links. I wanted to talk a little bit about the district's experience with a boil-water event that we had back on July 26th in the Cooper Mountain area. One of the interesting features that we were able to implement was a communication strategy to let our customers know that this boil-water event existed using a web-based tool that's called Who's My Water Provider? This is a tool that was actually developed by the Regional Water Providers' Consortium, which essentially allows a customer to go online to our website, click on a link, and at that link, you're able to enter your home address, and then you get a pop-up that indicates not only what that confirms that address and who your water provider is, but if you are in the affected area of a boil-water notice. And so it was a great tool for customers to find out if they were in or outside the boil-water notice. In the two days that that boil-water notice was actually in effect, that online tool received over 18,000 additional hits on that website. Given that there were only about 5,500 customers who were affected by the boil-water notice, it was pretty clear that the Who's My Water Provider tool was exercised by a lot of customers, not only those inside the affected area, but those outside the affected area to confirm that they were in fact outside, so it was a really useful tool. I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we heard from several customers who were very disappointed and frustrated that we didn't text or voicemail message them an alert announcing the boil-water notice. I think it was a pretty reasonable expectation that customers had that they might get an alert on their phone that they were in the affected area. While we have that capability, due to the large number of customers that were affected, over 5,000, we were told by the messaging service that we use for that kind of text notification that it would have taken about nine hours for all of the customers that were affected to be able to be notified. But more importantly, only those customers for whom we have contact information would have actually received the alert, probably leaving a false sense of security that some customers who didn't get notified weren't in the boil-water order, and in fact, that would have been potentially mistaken. Given that potential for the risk of misunderstanding, we decided to not initiate those calls and instead relied on traditional media, social media, which was a huge hit and very useful, the public's alert system, the Who's My Water Provider tool, and the district website to be able to notify customers. As you know, this was the largest boil-water notice that the district has experienced in recent history. We're continuing to review not only our notification procedures, but our response procedures, and I've identified some options for how we can improve our response and make that more efficient and more effective in the future. Again, we are just now four days away from the grand solar eclipse, so just a quick reminder that the district will be open for regular business on Monday, August 21st. We will observe our regular business hours. While we suspect that many customers will be paying attention to the solar eclipse rather than paying their water bills, the district will be open for business all day. We've taken a lot of preparedness actions led up by Matt Oglesby of our staff, making sure that we not only have sufficient fuel in our stockpiles for fuels, but making sure that our vehicles are fueled up, ready to go, in the event that traffic jams and/or fuel deliveries become a problem. We'll be using our emergency radios in addition to our cellphones in the event that cellphone traffic essentially overwhelms the capacity of the existing cellphone system. And again, we'll have staff and resources deployed in the field in the event that we wind up having traffic jams and can't get to our more critical facilities. So again, we're doing our best to be prepared, as well as making sure that we continue to satisfy and serve all of our customers if they're interested in not watching the eclipse. Last but not least, tonight...
Mark, can I...
Yes?
Is there seriously some thought that cellphone service might be affected here outside of the band of totality?
That's a risk that we've been advised that there could happen. Obviously, the biggest concern is out in eastern Oregon where the capacity didn't exist to begin with, but the sense is that because of social media and the opportunity to do online streaming of the videos consumes huge amount of bandwidth, and we just want to make sure we have the ability to respond in the event we need to. ability to respond in the event we need to. Finally, this evening, the department report will be by Dave Kraska, in keeping with the district's mission to provide quality water and customer service. He'll provide an update on the water supply program. Dave?
Thanks again, Mark. So the... Pardon me. The department report today, a lot of things to talk about on the program, but what I'll focus on tonight is finding ways to reduce program costs. As Paul mentioned in his presentation, we're constantly trying to find ways to get the cost of the overall program down and get creative in doing so. But we have to do that without sacrificing the program goals, the commitments that we've made in terms of achieving what we're set out to do. But tonight's example, there's a lot of them I could share, but the one I want to share with you tonight is the Willamette intake facilities and the raw water pump station. So here is an aerial photo of the existing Willamette River Water Treatment Plant. On the right hand of the graphic here is the Willamette River. Here's the treatment plant, a nice park next to it. And highlighted in yellow here are what's called the Willamette River intake facilities. There's a screen underwater here, a pipeline that comes into this structure right here, which is a 45-foot diameter, 80-foot-deep caisson, is what it's called, and all the pumps are inside that caisson. For reference, I believe this room is about 40 feet by 40 feet. So it's a bit larger than this room and 80 feet deep. It's a pretty large structure. This is a cartoon of it to give you kind of a section view of it. The Willamette River over here, the intake screens, and then the water would flow through the pipeline here into this caisson that I was talking about, and then the pumps here to deliver water either right now to the existing Willamette River Water Treatment Plant, and ultimately, our pumps will be in that structure as well to deliver water to the new water treatment plant. So this is a 3D image of the same thing. And when it was originally designed back in about 2000, constructed in 2002, the design engineers said it was a 120-MGD-capacity structure. And so that's what they said. It could ultimately, with the maximum amount of mechanical gear and pumps in here, that's the most it could do. Well, we did a study early on in the project to identify all the potential demands connected to this facility, and came up with a number of 150 MGD. So the difference there is about 30 MGD, and if we would need to build a new intake in order to accommodate that, that would be, could be 50 million, could be a lot more than 50 million, depending on property issues, depending on environmental constraints. And that's setting aside the issues related to the schedule of the overall program and environmental requirements and everything required for a whole new intake on the Willamette River. So we really wanted to avoid that, but certainly for the cost impacts alone. So the first thing we did was prepare a computer model of the intake itself, and that was a dynamic model. CFD stands for Computational Fluid Dynamics. So it's a really fancy version of computer modeling to assess dynamic conditions of water flow through hydraulic structures, exactly what we have here, to try to find the limit. And we were able to prove in the computer model that 140 MGD looked possible. So there is some promise there. The next step to really prove it to ourselves, to make sure that we felt comfortable going forward with this plan, was to actually construct a physical model of the whole structure to confirm the capacity limits and identify any design deficiencies and how to go about fixing them. So this is a little bit hard. Apologize for this photo. But what you see in this photo, just barely here, is the clear plastic tube that is the model of one of those pumps that would stick down in the caisson. And this is a little vein that shows whether the water is spinning as it's flowing up through this tube here, basically modeling, have a physical model of a pump. And then what you see here is a tube that's injecting dye down in the bottom of this, and you see how the dye stays in a nice, clear stream all the way up this pipe. That's actually a bad thing, because what's occurring there is inside the tube, the water is spinning and keeping the water, the dye, in a consistent column there. And that has negative impacts on the overall performance of the facility, and also its long-term operations and maintenance. This photo right here shows an example of those impacts, where a vortex forming at the bottom of this very large pump down here basically wore a big, huge hole in a reinforced concrete bottom of this wet well of this pump. So long before necessary, they had to take the pump station down, do a lot of repairs on it, and it's just a consequence of the design of this particular facility. This is another example, where this is actually the internals of a vertical turbine pump called an impeller. So this is kind of the working part of a pump. It spins like this, and this forces the water to go through it. But a vortex basically wore a hole through the veins of the impeller, again, shortening the life of the equipment, reducing the performance. And so we want to avoid this sort of condition as much as possible. And so a physical model is really what we need in order to identify that. So here it is. This is the physical model that was... We hired, their image is right here, Northwest Hydraulic Consultants up in Seattle to do this work for us. They are experts at this kind of work. This shows the intake pipeline that you saw in the graphic that I presented a little while ago. And this is the 1/5th, well, it's a 1/5th-scale model of the whole thing, but this is the intake pipeline, and then the caisson here. And you can see these tubes coming out of it. Each one of these tubes, there's 10 of them, representing a pump sitting down in the water here. This shows one of the pumps there, and then these veins here that are there to tell you if there's any rotation of the water inside the column as it flows up through it. This is, again, that intake pipeline. And this is a top view of the caisson itself, showing that they actually physically constructed all of the internals to a scale level of what's actually in the pump station itself, which is critical to understanding if there's any vortexes or bad rotation of water. Here's a couple of panoramic views at the top of the pump station, or the top of the model, and down at ground level, again, to give you a little bit of perspective. And I think my next click is a video. All right. So here's a video of the actual witness test that was conducted back in July that my team went out to go see. And this is just a walk under those pipes while it's still empty. It's a lot easier to see all the equipment that's inside it. This is it full of water, and you can see some rotation here on those pumps, which is not really what we want to see, but just a little bit. And now they're injecting dye, basically to try to find the vortexes if there are any. And this next image, you'll see where they actually found one and showed that it was actually a pretty stable vortex at the flow rate that they were modeling, and it's something that we definitely want to avoid. And it's, there it is. So this shows exactly that problem that we were afraid of, that at a specific flow rate, I don't know exactly what it is, but this is a problem for us. And so it needs to be fixed before we can expand the capacity of this pump station. And luckily, we found, with Northwest Hydraulics Consultants' help, a very cheap and easy fix. It's basically installed in a cage on the bottom of these pump screens. So it's specifically designed, what they call a vein-grading basket, to basically disperse the water coming into this tube. And you can see that the dye is a lot more diffuse up here. And they're trying to find vortexes, and they weren't able to find any, just with something as simple as that installed at the bottom of the pump when it's installed. So the nice thing about that is that this can be installed on the pump while it's outside, then just lowered, and you don't have to send divers in with a lot of construction or anything else. And this is an operating facility, so that's a real critical asset. So it's a great result for us. Excellent results. Vein-grading baskets will provide the desired results. So this is the model version of it. Really, one of the cool things about it, this is 3D-printed. So the engineers there designed it in computers, and then plugged it into their printer, and out it comes like that. So it's really spectacular. And one of the challenges that we said is that this has to work, and so we need to be able to take their product and actually implement it in their design. And this shows you what an actual finished product looks like. So these are, this is a pretty common thing that's done, but having a physical model like this gives us the certainty that we know it's exactly the answer we want. And so it's an inexpensive improvement that's going to provide the reliable operation, higher capacity at very low cost. So we're talking $100,000 or something rather for full implementation versus a whole new intake to get 250 MGD. And so our next steps, a final report that we just received yesterday. We're just in the process of hiring the design consultant to actually do this design and get it going for us, and then bring a CMGC contractor onboard next year. And I think that's the end of my presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions. Are there any questions? No? Very fascinating. Thank you, Dave.
If there are no questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report for the evening.
Okay, very good. I'm going to take a liberty right now and do, I guess, a safety minute of my own. First, I would like to recognize Marilyn Nick Williams, former Commissioner, served with distinction, and as a current Budget Committee member, thank you for coming today. And I wanted to do a little safety minute about the solar eclipse that's coming up. A lot of people are going to watch the solar eclipse. Roads are going to be packed. I and others recommend that if you have a place to go to see the eclipse, try to go the day before, if you can, and stay off the roads. A lot of people don't know that during the totality of the eclipse, it is safe to look at the sun, but only when the sun is completely covered. If the sun is not completely covered, it is not safe to look at the sun. You can burn your retina very easily. The only safe way to look directly at the un-eclipsed sun is through special-purpose solar filters, like eclipse glasses. A lot of stores are selling eclipse glasses right now. I know Fred Meyer is one of them, but there are others that are selling them as well. Homemade filters will not work. Sunglasses will not work, even very dark ones. Some people believe it's okay to use old-fashioned photo film. That does not work. A lot of the light that the sun emits is not visible, and the invisible wavelengths of light are among those that can burn your retina. So make sure that if you are going to look at the sun, you only look at the sun through a filter or glasses that are designed specifically for that purpose. Always inspect your filter before use. If scratched, punctured, torn, or damaged, throw it away. Read the instructions. Follow the instructions. Always supervise children using solar filters. If you normally wear eyeglasses, put them on. Put the eclipse glasses on over them, or hold your handheld viewer in front of them. These are some basic safety tips that can help keep you from hurting your eyes. If you're going to use a camera, make sure you have the proper filters. In advance, go to a professional camera store. If you're using a telescope or binoculars, make sure that the proper filter is on in front of the optics, not in back of the optics. Other than that, have a great time. This is going to be a pretty fantastic phenomenon. And I'm going to go down to a friend of mine who lives right in the center of totality, camp out with some equipment and study it, and I hope all of you are able to enjoy it as well, but just do it safely. So that's my little contribution to the Safety Minute pantheon tonight. And so have a great time. Now with that, the next item on our agenda today is Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended, and topics to be raised by the Commissioner. For no particular reason, I will start to my left and circle around. So Commissioner Duggan.
For the month of August, or since our last regular meeting, I just have our work session that we held on August 1st, where we had HR policy, bill pay system update, and a branding presentation. On the 2nd of August, that 105-degree day, we had our RAIT Open House Number One, where five, I believe it was five constituents showed up, and the staff made an excellent presentation that was complimented, again, by tonight's meeting. And then today's report. Commissioner Duggan.
Okay. I attended the work session on August 1st, the RAIT Open House on August 2nd, the RAIT Open House on August 12th, and tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Okay. I attended the work session August 1st and tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Bagnall.
And I also attended the Board Work Session on August 1st. And then on August 8th, I attended an agenda planning meeting with our CEO and President Burke, and then tonight's meeting, of course. And I will be attending the RAIT's Open House on the 22nd. And I want to say thank you to the staff for doing all of that outreach. I think it's really important.
I have seven meetings to report. I have tonight's meeting, of course. I attended and participated in the August 12th TVWD Open House meeting. On the 8th of August, I also met with Commissioner Bagnall and our CEO to plan the agenda. On August 2nd, I attended another TVWD Open House on RAITs. On the 1st of August, I also attended the TVWD Workshop. On the 29th of July, I participated officially in the Tolton Valley Park and Rec District Party in the Park, which was a lot of fun. One of the highlights, I thought, was the canine demonstration that the Washington County Sheriff's Office put on. That was very popular. But there were a lot of good exhibitions and activities there. And then on the 21st of July, I attended the Oregon Taxpayer Coalition, where there were a number of speakers, including Julie Parrish, who spoke about some of the efforts to deal with the healthcare-related taxes that were passed by the legislature and might be before us in a referendum. So those are my meetings for the month. Are there any Commissioner topics? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is public comment. This is time to set aside for persons wishing to address the Board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. I don't see any blue sheets in front of me, and I don't know if anyone wants to testify. And seeing none, we'll go to the next item, and that is the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and may be approved in one motion without separate discussion. Any Board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the Board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. So there are three items on the consent agenda. Approve the July 10th, 2017 Retreat Minutes, the July 19th, 27 Regular Meeting Minutes, and August 1st, 2017 Work Session Minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's pose nay. Consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to the last item on our agenda for the evening, and that is an informational presentation, Water System Design and Construction Standards Update, presented by Senior Engineer Pete Boone.
So as Pete comes up to the testimony table, I wanted to provide just a brief introduction. So back in January 2009, the Board took an interesting step and basically authorized the CEO and Chief Engineer to provide routine updates to the district's engineering and construction standards. And so basically, the Board vested responsibility for maintenance of those standards with the staff. We've maintained those standards over the years, and I think done a fabulous job. But about a year ago, our new, at the time, Chief Engineer, Kerry Pack, identified the opportunity to make substantial upgrades to those standards. And given the nature of the extensive change to the standards, as well as just the exceptional work that was done by the staff, I had asked Pete Boone to come this evening and present the nature of the updates, and just provide a real quick overview, so the Board could be familiar with the changes that we made and the work that's being done. So take it away, Pete.
Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Dave, for the help that you're about to provide. Good evening, President Burke, Commissioners. As Mark mentioned, I'm here to provide a very brief overview about the recent updates that we've made to the district's water system design and construction standards. These standards provide guidance to developers and engineers who are working within the district and expanding the distribution system. Basically, it's a playbook for those wanting to do development within our service area. These are not intended for complex projects. A lot of the larger projects that we do require specific designs and specifications, but these cover most of the development work that occurs inside our service area. And as Mark mentioned, the standards require periodic updates to meet industry standards, evolving district practices, things that we learn as we go about our daily business. So we had done those, some of those updates via addenda to the standards over the last five years, but it was really time to make some more substantive changes and... five years, but it was really time to make some, some more substantive changes and incorporate those addenda that had been made. The primary objectives for this update, the, one of the largest ones was to improve our resistance to corrosion on all new infrastructure that was installed. We learned a lot about corrosion on our buried infrastructure over the last few years. The vast majority of our buried infrastructure is metal pipes, and metal buried under the ground, it tends to corrode. So we've, we've learned a lot about how to prevent that, and we wanted to incorporate that into our standards. We wanted to make the standards simple and user-friendly. I've got a, a copy of the draft, and you can see it's a, it's a large document of about 100 pages and includes a lot of information, so we want to make that as easy to interpret as we can for the, for the folks that are using it. And provide practical solutions. You know, if, if these solutions are, are overly complicated, they can be difficult to implement, difficult for us to inspect, and just hard to work with. And again, we wanted to incorporate what we learned over the last five-year period about the corrosion, about new products that are available for the industry and, and new ways to do things as we expand the system and as developers expand the system. Talked about corrosion. We, we've specified the, the pipe material and improved the materials that are required to be used on development projects. We continue to require restrained joints as part of our seismic resiliency criteria. We now have the authority, well-defined within our standards, to designate certain pipelines as critical infrastructure and require a higher level of design and construction on, on those pipes. And we also solidified our ability to require financial sureties from developers in cases where they want to have their service, service lines and meters installed ahead of final project completion. So we wanted to make sure that, we always had a way to, to ensure that our, that all of our standards were met all the way through an entire project, and any punchless items were sure to be completed at the end of, of a project. And we now have solidified our ability to require design engineers to pothole other buried utilities during the design process to avoid changes during construction and other conflicts. So as we roll this out, we want to make sure that we're communicating these changes, not only to those developers and engineers who are using the standards, but also to our own staff, who, who are also required to meet these standards and, and inspect the improvements as they're constructed. So we're going to do that through some training sessions, both in-house, and provide this information out to the, the development community, folks that are, that are relying on these standards. And they will be posted to the district website. And, and as always, we, we work closely with design engineers and developers throughout the design process and ensure that, that they're always meeting our standards, not only through design, but also construction and through inspection. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have.
Are there any questions?
No, but I'd like to make an observation, which is that as the former chief engineer of the Portland Water Bureau, I used to, what, produce these things. I gave a cursory glance to this and decided that a thorough review was not necessary based on the quality that I saw. This is an outstanding document, and, and you need all the credit you can get for this. I didn't see a thing in here that conflicted with either current practices or, or best standards, and we should be very proud of this. And, and I am, anyway, and on your behalf, since I didn't have anything to do with it. Anyway, it's, it's a darn good set of standards, and I wouldn't be surprised if other utilities adopted these.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I do need to give credit where it's due to a lot of our staff, engineers and field staff who contributed to this process. We, we gathered input from folks all across the organization who, who deal with these standards and deal with construction, and, and they all helped out a lot, and it's reflected in the document.
Just a matter of interest, when I worked at Century West Engineering, they sent me to a cast iron pipe corrosion seminar. The city of the DOWs, a lot of their main lines came around the horn on sailing ships. They have no corrosion issues, apparently.
Yeah.
Now, I want to say something briefly. We're blessed on this board to have three engineers. I'm not one of them, and so a lot of times the things that our engineers bring us will go over my head technically, but one thing that I have learned over the years as a member of AWWA is watching how Tolton Valley Water District staff members and engineers are consistent contributors to the lifting and improvement of standards that are used throughout the world. And as Commissioner Don pointed out, you know, the work that's done here may well be taken up by other entities, and that's just another example of the fine work. So thank you very much, and thank you to your team and the entire staff.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
I'd like to echo both Jim and Richards and Dick's comments. This is a well-prepared document. I really love the standard drawings. They, the updates to them are very clear. They, they show things very well, and in particular, I also like the, the backflow section that is very descriptive and, and provides a lot more guidance than, than some of our other nearby water providers. So congratulations to, to staff on this and to Pete and everybody that had a hand in putting this together. So thank you.
Thank you.
So again, we will continue to do what it is that you told us to do in 2009, and, and the chief engineer and CEO will, will adopt these standards, so there's no need for action on your part. But again, I thought it was important that you see the kind of work that's gone into maintaining the high standards that the district has, as well as the leadership that exists in terms of making that happen.
Very good. And as there is no further business on tonight's agenda, I hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.